All right, it is the hour of 7:30. Before we call the meeting to order, it's my job as President to review the rules and procedures of a virtual meeting. So if you will bear with me for just a few minutes, I will quickly read through those. This meeting is open to the public with advance notice on the Borough webpage and the link that was provided. The agenda for the meeting was posted on the website in advance of the meeting for the public to download. The official record of the meeting will be the written minutes that must be submitted to council for approval. The recording of the meeting will not be the official record of the meeting. During the meeting, the council and staff will be the only live microphones. The public microphones will be unmuted to make comments during the public comment sections of the meeting on an individual basis. This will be so that the comments can be clearly heard by everyone. The public can use the raise your hand feature of the software and their microphone will be unmuted for them to comment. Members of the public must state their name and address before proceeding with their comment. If a commenter would like to have their comment in the minutes unabridged, it must be submitted to the Borough office in writing. While every attempt will be made to limit executive sessions of council, then need for that may arise and adjournment to an executive session would be necessary. At that time, the host would remove the public and any staff not involved from the meeting and stop the recording and lock the meeting to entry. If there is action to be taken after the executive session and at the council president's direction, the host will then unlock the meeting and begin recording again. A record of the public logins will be attached to the minutes as an attendance sheet. At the adjournment of the meeting, the video shall be compiled and added to the YouTube channel under the Borough of Mechanicsburg. During this crisis, the guest portion of the agenda shall be suspended. Comments received via non- or electronic means shall be read into the minutes under the correspondence portion of our agenda. And I thank you for your indulgence. At this time, I call the May 19th, 2020 Borough Mechanicsburg Council meeting to order. We will begin with the pledge to the flag. If you have one close by, use it, please. And we will follow that with a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic where we stand. Which is one nation under God. Under God. Indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. The moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. All right, roll call, please. Sarah's muted.
I am, President?
No, Sarah Martin is muted.
I was like, whoa, I didn't even hear my name.
President Weber?
I'm here.
Vice President Miller?
Here.
Councilwoman Agarson?
Present.
Councilwoman Anthony?
Present.
Councilwoman Pelman? Councilwoman Whitcomb?
Here.
EMC Wardle?
Here.
Chief Myers?
Here.
Chief Neff?
Here.
Manager Szczeski?
Here.
Assistant Manager Boyer?
Here.
We have a quorum. I did not ask a square coin, I apologize.
I'm here.
Thank you, Robert. I understand Lisa will be joining us shortly.
She will.
All right. Okay, so we have a quorum. Are there any citizens' comments? Any of you citizens who are logged in, if you would like to make comment this time, hit your raise hand button and we'll be happy to listen to your comments. Hearing none? We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting of May 5th, 2020. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Been moved by Anthony Second? Second by?
Backing.
Who was that?
I think it was Rod Whitcomb.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. And the motion carries. All right, managers, report.
As you noticed, that took up most of the packets that I sent out this week. There are two things that came in, actually, after I sent the packets out and today, as a matter of fact. One is a letter from a resident, Jeff Elwell, on North Market Street. Concerns charges to his sewer without regards to the drain of any water. In a nutshell, I'll be sending this out to everyone so that you can see what it is. But in a nutshell, it was, he filled a swimming pool with 3,500 gallons of water. He doesn't feel that he should be charged on the sewer bill for that and we need to make an exception for it. He said he didn't want to hear the excuses that this is in the ordinance, there's no D duck meter. You know, so, again, he's looking for an answer on how to charge, how you can charge me sewer, charge for water used when it will never see the drain or the drain field. Regardless of what the ordinance says, how do I get charged for sewer used to fill my swimming pool and I'll never see it drain? So, I'll send out an email, I'll send that out to everyone and they can take a look at it. The other piece of correspondence that came in today, came in from the New Year's Eve wrench drop. It's from Darrell Westby. He says he's been trying to determine how to raise funds for the wrench drop this year. One idea is to use the Borough parking lot just west of the Chamber of Commerce. We request using the north side of the lot near the railroad tracks, we would have a person on the east end of the lot to sell or pick up pre-sold tickets and another person on the west end of the lot to do the same. People would enter the parking lot from the east or west and turn right to enter, pick up the food and leave on the other end. The timeframe would be 1 to 5 on June 13th or the 20th. Another issue they are looking at, working on, is updating their web and Facebook pages to work for this event. The date could slip if the web or the Facebook pages are not done in time. He wished he had more definite information. Basically, what he was asking for was permission to use the parking lot on the 13th or the 20th, instead of having like the ox roast in the park, they're trying to raise money for, also for the wrench drop. So, I told him I wasn't sure about that, we may have to look at a special events permit and it depends on what we've got going on in town at that time with the reopening started. That's the two pieces of correspondence I have. Some of the other issues that we've been addressing is, one of the big ones I would like to discuss tonight is the reopening of the Borough office coming up next week when we go to yellow. Don't know if everybody, if anybody has any questions on what I sent out as far as my plans so far. There is one thing that we've been looking at, Chief Myers and I have been discussing how to get people upstairs to the police department, whether we hold them downstairs here and then send them up one at a time because, you know, they don't have as big a lobby as we have downstairs. The other situation that we were looking at was potentially having people come into the office by appointment only. I know there's some places that are doing that. I spoke to, actually, the five managers in the area besides myself today. Lou Fizik has sent out an email asking about what our reopening plans were. We, I shared what I had and told them that, you know, that may change tonight with the council saw something different. But, there was Keith Metz from over at Hampton, he spoke about how they're gonna do theirs on a, on a, they're gonna do theirs on a, on a, yeah, I'll think of it here in a second, on an appointment basis. So, that's where we're at right now. And we'll see where it goes from there. But, did anybody have any questions on the plan that I sent out as far as what we're planning on doing here under the yellow when we go to that next Tuesday?
Okay. Hearing none. Go ahead.
Comments? Go ahead, Mr. Anthony. Just a quick question, I mean, first of all, this is great, I mean, that you laid it all out like this, very well done, Roger, thank you very much. So, not being picky and just asking the question, the Plexiglas or actual glass windows installed for the yellow, can you talk about that a little bit?
The two windows that everyone knows are wide open out here are the codes office window and the window in front of Caitlin, the main service window. With no Plexiglas on there or anything like that, we did have some up over the winter for air quality, it wasn't a very good job. I have a gentleman that came in today and took measurements for those. He's going to get those installed probably this weekend, Saturday. They'll have the little slide doors on them and they'll be permanently installed, they're not going to be the temporary ones. So, we'll have those in here. We're actually gonna close off the door going into the codes office. Instead of having the half door there, it's gonna be, the half door will still be there at night when they leave, they'll just close the pop one and put the locks on it. But, the access won't be through there, it'll just be for the pass-through.
Okay, so you've already, you've already arranged to install the Plexiglas or whatever?
Yes.
So, Roger, they're gonna have sliding door on there so they can shut it off totally?
Yes, yes, they are.
Okay.
And what's the cost associated with that?
It could, the last I got for the professional, the big glass, the, and all that other stuff, it was around $1,600. But, for right now, I think what we're gonna do is go with a quarter inch laminate glass, which the people have in stock, so it should be a little bit cheaper.
Is that an expense that falls under recoverable expenses, under the care?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Yep.
Hearing none? I'm sorry.
I do, I mean, my report was pretty lengthy. As you can see, the stuff that we got from the Pennsylvania Rec and Parks Society and also from the CDC, the 68-page guidance and the 47 pages from the Parks Society. When I spoke to Keith Metz today from over at Hampton, we started discussing the playground stuff and the pools and stuff like that. His board is not going to open the Hampton pool until they get a workable set of guidelines from the CDC. Reasonable, reasonably workable, was his exact words. He did call his laid-off and furloughed park staff back to cancel all the summer camps and all summer activities over there. So, that's what they're gonna be doing. I don't know if anybody has seen it, that Allegheny County has closed all of their pools for the summer. These guidelines, and this is something I think Nate might talk to a little bit later, they're, they're, they're gonna be very, very difficult to meet, to open the pool safely. So, extremely difficult. And until we get more direct clearance, I mean, everybody knows this weekend's Memorial Day, the pool would have been open normally this weekend. We've just not been able to get the direct guidelines on what we have to do at the pool. So, that is, that's about all I have. I do have, we did get masks for everyone. You'll see the highway guys and us in the office here wearing these masks. So, that's where we're set up now. One of the other things that we'd like to, I'd like to discuss is Election Day, is, Election Day is our next council meeting. So, I would like to discuss that potentially as an addition to the agenda of moving our next council meeting for Election Day. It's gonna be difficult enough to have that, have Election Day in here without running through the meeting, and I know Councilman Weber has a conflict that night. But, we have markings on the floor in here as far as six feet apart, we're gonna do the one-way in, one-way out. And I have markings out on the sidewalk and on the driveway coming in the side at six feet apart for Election Day. So, we're as prepared as we're gonna be in here with the exception of the Plexiglas or the glass windows that are gonna be installed this weekend.
Hey, Roger, I wanted to let you know that I work the polls too on Election Day, so I, I'm not available for the meeting either.
Okay, sorry, Scott, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Roger? I have a quick question for you. I tour the polls, but do you have masks for visitors who come in who don't have a mask with them?
No, we do not. That was a discussion that we weren't exactly sure. There's also some clarification on who we have to basically take the temperature of when they come in, is it just our employees or is it, or is it everyone that comes through the door? So, that's one of the things, there is, I am gonna maintain the sign on the front door that, you know, if you don't have a mask, please don't come in. That's kinda why I was wondering, we were kicking back and forth whether we wanted to have the, by appointment only to come in.
Okay, so.
By appointment only, you talking for Election Day?
No, no.
No, 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 I'm talking normally, just to.
Regular Borough business. Regular Borough business.
We have a lot of, we have a lot of older residents that just come in to say hi or just come in to pick up a pamphlet or something like that. And, you know, that, that can take up a lot of day and, and if there's somebody already in here, that, we've gotta be careful of the amount of people we have in.
Okay, so, I think we discussed this before, not in a meeting, but we do have a bell system or a buzzer system at the door, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so, your sign out front could just simply say, you must have a mask to enter and to gain access, you must ring the bell, and then somebody will unlock the door and let you in. Rather than have appointment only, that, that's a lot of, now, I know that takes a person away from their desk, you know, but I think that may be the safest way to do it. At the hospital right now, what they're doing is, you're met by two people when you go in, one of them takes your temperature and the other one checks to see if you're a person that's supposed to be there. Well, obviously, we don't know if the person's supposed to be there or not, but it's pretty, it's pretty intense and I don't think any of the businesses that are open right now are allowing anybody in without a mask either. So, I think if we just abide by that and have them ring the buzzer when they wanna come in, that, that might be the easiest way. That's just my opinion, I don't know if anyone else has anything to add to that?
I, I agree with that, Gary, and I also, I know, just coming from my healthcare perspective background, that taking temperatures of anyone coming in is probably a really good thing. We're screened at every place that we go at this point. Just a quick temperature, keep those fevers out. People just get used to the new normal.
Okay.
That's gonna be a lot of time.
Nope, you just really pointed at their forehead and it tells you their temperature, it's pretty quick.
And you have one of these, Roger?
Actually, we got five of them.
Oh.
Yeah.
Good for you.
We got, I don't know what to say, 98.2, so, I'm, I'm allowed to be in the office.
That's good.
So, yeah, it's, yeah, we have, it's a good thing because I've been in here non-stop for I don't know how long. Yeah, we've got six of these non-contact forehead thermometers, so, we bought five of them, so we're gonna use them. I know, I got one for each department and the police, you know, the chief upstairs, highway sewer, and we have a spare, so, we're, we're in pretty good shape.
Anyone else have an opinion on how you think we should do this to, because we are gonna do this next week, right?
I'm planning on that, if that, if councils, sorry, John, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I was just kind of agreeing that we should stay open and we need to protect the folks that are in the office, so if that means during yellow that we're taking people's temperatures in a non-invasive way, well then so be it. I would like to see us be able to offer masks to people who don't have them, if that's paper masks for the moment that they can walk out with. I know they're in short supply or difficult to get, but it might be something we wanna put on order so that we can get them.
Okay, I can see if we can find some, some of the surgical masks or something like that, something similar to that and go from there. I'll see what some of our suppliers have.
Anyone else? Anything else? Mr. Szczeski?
I believe that's all that I have. I do have the agenda item under there for opening the pool.
Yes, I would hope that during that, during that time, we can have the discussion on the pool.
Okay, that's, that's about all I have. I'm still going through the 68 and 140 pages that I'm sure everybody read over the weekend. It's such a riveting page turner, but, no, I'm gonna let Nate go from there, I've spoken enough tonight.
Okay, well, he is next on the agenda, so, Mr. Wardle, it's up to you.
My report to Roger right before the meeting, which means I had to close this, so let me open it back up. The EXC has continued to work over the last month to protect the health and well-being of the residents of Mechanicsburg, to collect information, to disseminate information to Borough officials, and to work to prepare the Borough for filing of expenses to receive reimbursement. We have submitted all current expenses to the county, which is more for awareness at this point, and at this point, those costs are over $52,000. The majority of these expenses are for sick pay, but there are also some material costs for signage, PPE, et cetera. As of May 19th, there are 63,666 cases of COVID-19 in Pennsylvania and 4,624 deaths. For some perspective, since the last time I had a full report on April 21st, cases have increased by nearly 30,000, just under a 100% increase, while deaths have gone up by nearly 200%, a sobering statistic. In Cumberland County, there are 540 cases and 41 deaths. 314 of the cases in Cumberland County have occurred at nine long-term care facilities throughout the county. Nearly all the deaths that have occurred in Cumberland County are among long-term care facility residents. In the 17055 ZIP code, there are 54 positive cases and 485 negative cases. While the positive cases went up by about 200%, the negative cases went up nearly 400%. So, this shows that with increased testing in the Mechanicsburg area, we are not seeing a major increase in COVID-19 cases in the ZIP code, but we are seeing a significant increase in the negative cases. Please note that if any nursing homes in the ZIP code have positive cases, they would be included in that total. I do not believe that there are any, and I know that there aren't any in the Borough. As you're likely aware, Cumberland County will move into the yellow phase on Friday, just in time for Memorial Day. However, it is essential to caution the importance of continuing to take the proper precautions moving forward. People should continue to wear masks anytime they're coming into contact or meeting with someone who is not a resident of their own household. This would include other family members outside of their own home at picnics and gatherings, even if outdoors. People should continue to practice social distancing and remember to wash their hands frequently. Erie County, for example, as a county that is already in the yellow phase, has seen a surge of cases over the last few days stemming from people who got together on Mother's Day. We cannot let our guard down as citizens, as a municipality, but each step forward is a positive step in the fight against this virus. Now, I know that there was some mention about the pool and some consideration for that. What I can tell you is, the Department of Health, as you probably are aware, is the entity that regulates pools, much like we do other healthcare facilities, which you may be aware of based on the news right now. I believe that the guidance that is going to be provided to municipalities is going to be the CDC guidance that you have in front of you. I do not believe that there is, going to be something separate that comes out from what the CDC has put out. It is subject to change, but that's what I'm aware of at this time. With that in mind, and with Roger's prior comments and the opportunities, I've had, I've had to look through that data, I certainly think that there would be a level of concern with opening the pool based on what is necessary and what is feasible for the Borough. I know that other people may have opinions on this, I know that it's on the agenda, but I wanted to offer that briefly, and I'm more than willing to answer any questions anyone has.
Nate, do you know, now that we're moving into the yellow phase, is there a timeline that they've set for the yellow to get, to move into the green?
So, I was actually, I was actually asked this earlier today, John Anthony actually gave me a call and asked me the exact question. Roger has asked me this question as well. There was not arbitrary data points set for moving from yellow to green whenever the plan was announced, simply because we didn't know what it would take to get counties and regions to the yellow phase. And so, we didn't wanna arbitrarily set, okay, if we cut the 50 in half to 25 cases per 100,000, then everybody will be good to go to green. So, those metrics are not in place. The Department of Health is actively working to develop what those metrics are going to be, simply because there are many counties that would never get to a 25 case per 100,000 metric if the virus stays around for quite a long time. And parts of South Central Pennsylvania would probably be included in that. So, we wanted them to take a realistic look at what is going to be viable to assist counties who are looking to move to green without making it a very prolonged process that is going to frustrate people more than they already are. I do know that there is the potential that there are some counties and regions, mainly the north central, if you've seen their case counts, this won't be a surprise, that may be in the green phase before we hit the month of June. It is a possibility based on the data and the cases they have in much of the north central part of the state. However, I think the best comparison and the best thing to watch right now is Erie County, because they are the most populous county that is currently in the yellow phase and has been in it for more than a few days. Obviously, Southwest and Pittsburgh moved into it last Friday, but Erie County has been in it for a longer period of time and they are seeing some concerns with people gathering and not taking the proper precautions leading to cases. And I think that watching Erie County move from yellow and when they move to green may be a good analogy for how long it may take to move Cumberland County from yellow to green.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything for Nate? Okay, thank you for your report, appreciate it very much. Mr. Mayor, are you here?
I am here.
There you are.
I am here, ready for a report.
Just in time for your report.
Yes, here we go. April 21, the annual Safe School Driving Competition sponsored by South Central PA Highway Safety was canceled. April 30th, officiated a no-fee wedding. May 1st, meeting of the Union Church to discuss maintenance. The interior was recently painted. May 11th, Crime Watch was canceled. And I have a trivia question. There was a school built in Mechanicsburg in 1837, 1837, and burned in 1876. Where was it?
It would be behind Washington.
That would have been Arch Street School.
Nope.
No, the Arch Street School would burn.
The Union, it was the Union Church School, it was behind the Union Church. And the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that. All right, we now move on to any additions to the agenda. to the agenda. Does anyone have any additions to the agenda?
Okay, I have two of them, sir. One would be discussion and possible action to move our, advertise and move our meeting for June the 4th.
June, June the second.
June the second, I'm sorry. To let, you know, because of Election Day and whatever council would like to move it to. The other one is discussion and possible action to set the conditional use hearing date of July 7th at 7:00 PM for landmark homes at Legacy Park concerning new and innovative designs in regard to signage.
All right, we have two additions to the agenda. We need a motion to accept them.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Whitcomb. A second?
I'll second.
Uh, I think Kyle got in there first, Sarah, sorry. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Now, while, since we're at this point, at this juncture, I, in order to keep this moving smoothly, one of the things I've noticed is when we take a vote and everybody says aye at the same time, it's one garbled mess and the secretary has no clue who said yes. So what I'm going to do is follow this procedure. Until further notice, I will say unless I hear a negative response, I will ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. So when we call for the question, if you don't want, if you're voting against it, all you have to do is say no, and your screen will light up. And then we'll know who the no ones are. If there are no nos, then we'll record it unanimously. Everyone understand? I think it should make things work a little smoother for us. Thank you. Okay, so we're now at the point of approval of the agenda itself, and then we need a motion. Oh, excuse me.
I'll make that motion.
We didn't, we didn't actually vote on the, we didn't actually vote on, hold on a minute.
We didn't vote on any additions?
No.
Right.
All right, sorry. That's the problem with these meetings, you get phone calls. So we're going to go back and vote on the additions to the agenda. Unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. Hearing none, the vote is unanimous and it's approved. Okay, moving on now, Roger.
All right.
Approval of the agenda, I'm sorry. We need to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Miller made the motion, Mr. Whitcomb seconded. Unless I hear a negative response, we ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous vote. Hearing none, it is unanimous. All right, let's move on, Mr. Szczesinski, to the action items before council this evening.
Okay, action items before council on May 19th, 2020. Discussion possible action to approve resolution 072020, local tax penalty extension.
Okay, Mr. Miller makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Mrs. Aggerton has the second. Is there any discussion? Just for those of you who don't know, this is the same thing that we're looking at from the county, is that correct?
That is, that is correct. It's the same as the counties.
Yep. All right. So unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. And the motion carries. Discussion possible action on the opening of the pool for the 2020 season.
I'd like to make a motion to keep the pool closed.
All right, we have a motion to keep the pool closed. Is there a second? I'm not hearing one.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been seconded. So with that, we now can have discussion. So this is our opportunity, folks. This is the big question and lies in front of us here. And so I'm going to entertain discussion from each and every one of you, I hope, on your opinion and what path we should follow. We've heard the EMC's report, we've heard, we've gotten Roger's report. Some of us have had information from other boroughs and other townships.
So. I'll go first, Gary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anthony. Go ahead.
Or President, sorry. Yeah, so I think, I think it's time for us to pull the trigger. I think that we've had enough input from the professionals that are around us. I think that the liability that we bring upon ourselves in trying to be compliant and trying to keep our community members safe as we, if we try to keep this pool open through this period is just beyond our capacity. I think our staff has done everything they could possibly do to try and figure out a way to make it happen, and it's just not something that makes sense either fiscally or from a safety position to the borough. So at this point, I support not opening the pool for this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to join in?
I'd like to, I'd like to join in on the conversation. I want to support Councilman Anthony's position. I think it would be a huge liability to open the pool in terms of the restrictions that we place on opening and the possible shortages we would have and staff members. But I want to thank the borough manager for providing the pool costs to me that I asked for. They are very detailed, but I was wondering if we could take advantage of this time that we're going to have the pool closed to make the pool more sustainable? Is there anything we could do to the pool while it's closed during this time that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise that would help us in the future to make it a more sustainable, more efficient operation? So that, that's one question I have and maybe to the borough staff to come up with something to do that and take this sad occurrence, you know, it's going to be a sad summer, but make it into something that could possibly be helpful to the borough moving forward.
And I, and I would like to support those comments on both, both councilmen. I think that this is the opportunity for us to do some of those repairs that were outlined and to put some effort into planning to continue improving our pool so that next summer we can open it up and it will be bigger and better than ever. It is a sad and difficult decision, but I think that we've taken into account the experts and the planning, and I think that this is a wise decision for our community members.
Anyone else?
Hey, Roger.
Yes, sir.
Scott. Hey, what, what is going on as far as the park recreation program? You know, the kids there for the summer programs are the, one of the biggest users of the pool. Are they still having that, do you know, the summer rec program for kids?
In a conversation I had with Dr. Lighty from the school district, he is starting to, they are leaning towards canceling summer adventure camp. I did get an email probably about two and a half, about an hour and a half ago from Tanya, asking for a meeting about the playground situation. That is another situation that, you know, we're going to have to address coming up here under the yellow phase. But they're, the school district's leaning towards closing that. They are kind of drawing back a little bit to keep the, keep the focus on the education aspect of all this, because that is, I mean, that's what they're, they're intended to be doing. And that is their main focus, and that's where they want to keep it. So the outlier benefits to the school district are not being prioritized as much as what the education aspect is. They're, they're kind of looking at it as a, as, you know, what can we do to keep this thing focused on what it's supposed to be focused on?
Mr. President.
It would be my guess, it would be my guess that registration for that is almost to the point where it's past time to do. They always do that registration pretty early. I don't know. So that also throws a little wrench into it. Someone else was?
Mr. President, Scott Miller.
Hi, Mike.
Um, I, two things. First, I'm apparently wearing the same glasses as Councilman Miller. That's just a coincidence, not some sort of Miller thing. But secondly, I'm counsel to Solicitor for South Carolina Township. We just made the announcement to cancel our, our summer program entirely. We did so after consulting with the insurance who would be covering the summer program, and the insurance company made clear their dim view of having a summer program in a time of COVID. And I suspect as the district goes forward and checks with their carrier, they're likely to have the same answer. And as much as I hate to suggest it, and as much as I hate to suggest that those opportunities will be foreclosed, I think it's a likelihood that, that we'll get the same answer. The reason I mention it is, again, Hannah went through this fairly extensively before they made this decision.
Thank you. Appreciate your input. Anyone else want to add?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So we voted to have the parks closed while we were in this red zone, right? Are the parks still going to be, do we need to vote to have them opened up? Or are they going to remain closed through yellow or at some point when Borough Council decides to open them back up again?
Well, that was, if I, if I may, that was actually a question that I posed to both Solicitor Miller and Solicitor Coin of where we stand with our emergency declaration. We did not put an end date on our emergency declaration. And that's where, do we have to modify this? Do we, you know, how do we, how do we go about this? Do we have to lift it, issue another one? What's the situation for that? And I, I'll let those, the attorneys speak to that if they will.
Hi, hi, folks. Lisa Coin here. I couldn't log in under mine. I just, I'm nudging in here with Bob Coin. So to answer that, and I think Mike Miller had provided some guidance as well to Roger, our resolution was global in the sense that we are mirroring what the federal, the state and the county has maintained as far as the declared state of emergency. Under that, under Title 35, the guidance here is that there's no need for us to enact another resolution and extending. It was not an end date for that, Councilman Anthony. As far as what we do under the different declared yellow, I think that there is some deference given to the management, the, the emergency management coordinator with Roger and with council as far as what efforts we want to do in modifying what the use of the parks are. Currently, I understand the parks are open for passive use. Is that correct, Roger?
That is correct.
Right. So to the extent there is additional, I think we're still guided by the, what the governor has and the state has provided to us in limited fashion, we have to interpret that moving forward. But I don't think there's a need for us at this point to, to modify anything but to be guided by those, those parameters that are provided at the state and eventually at the county level for implementation.
I would just concur with exactly what Lisa said. I would mention that I pulled up the emergency declaration, and I don't see anywhere where it mentions a particular phase, red, yellow, or green. And that's by design that Lisa and I worked on this collectively with Roger that way. That gives you the greatest amount of latitude to make adjustments to how the borough reacts to various changing circumstances. So the only thing that I would suggest, and I think Lisa and I have talked about this before, and I know she certainly agrees, if we change the manner in which we react to the parks, the pool, or anything else, we have to be very, very cautious to make clear what it is we're announcing, what the new rules are, and give it a little bit of lead time before you make it, you know, before you turn the switch on. I think everyone gets the idea that you go to yellow and, I don't know, you know, everything is going to change all at once. I think that to the extent, I think Lisa said it absolutely correctly, that the emergency management coordinator and the manager have the latitude as given to them by council to make the appropriate adjustments, and they're going to do so with the appropriate advertisement, make clear that everyone knows what the rules are so there's no misunderstanding. So for what that's worth, that's, that's how I see it.
Thank you for that. My, my question was, I think, driven towards, you know, we were talking about whether or not there were going to be activities in the park with children and being run by the rec department and those kinds of things. And if our rec organization wants to put together special events during the course of the summer, I was asking, and I think I heard the answer, the, the closing of the parks was a Borough Council action. We would need another Borough Council action to open them to anything else than, other than the passive walking through the parks kind of thing. So if the rec department wanted to put something on, we would need to know about it first and approve opening the parks to that kind of activity. Am I wrong on that, or am I right?
You're, you're correct on that, Councilman Anthony. That would be something coordinated with, with Roger. And it's not a matter of the rec department just deciding what they're going to do. There's obviously has to be a direct coordination with Roger and the staff for, for that. And to the extent further council action is, is requested by Roger, that would be something we would look at. But the emergency declaration affords Roger as well as what the, the guidance from the, from Nate, as far as what is appropriate under the current color that we're operating under.
Right. So the, the rec department starts those kind of camps in the beginning of June, right? That was my concern. We have, we have two weeks plus now, whatever we're going to decide is our next meeting. So I just want to make sure that we are able to help facilitate it if anything's going to happen, that's all.
If we open up the park stuff, don't we have to have it sanitized and stuff like that?
There's a lot of things in the yellow. There's a lot of restrictions with the outdoor camps. There's a ratio of 1 to 10. There's daily sanitation. It's going to be tough. I would be interested to see what Tanya says about that. My guess is, I think Derek's right. If they haven't done these, if they haven't signed up, the possibility of opening camps and having its staff doesn't seem very likely. But I think that we should get her answer before, and talk to her before we make any decision, or have to make any decision.
You, you're absolutely right. And I think, and we will. I'm, like I said, I've got a meeting tomorrow. Is it tomorrow? She's, we're trying to set up a meeting so that we can discuss the playground programs. Those are the programs that are basically the free, I don't want to call them free daycare, but they're free programs for participants through the week. And I think those are, that's going to be the big topic of conversation. It's going to be between Scott Fraser and myself and Tanya and where we stand on that. I know Scott is, we've been having some issues with baseball, not necessarily Upper Allen and Mechanicsburg Little League, but some of the, the groups have been getting together at various baseball fields, and there are a lot more than 10 of them playing. So we've been getting some phone calls about that. And there's just different things going on on these fields that I don't know if people are not, not educating or if they're just not wanting to follow along with what's going on. So there are some things that I think that, that we need to address. And I think that once I get this meeting with Tanya, I think we'll be, we'll be further down the road and I can answer these questions a little better.
Roger, how are people responding when we are enforcing the non-gathering in the parks? Are people responding okay?
Yeah, pretty much. For the most part, they are. I, last night, as a matter of fact, the one on York Street, I emailed Doug Marsico directly, you know, and told him that, you know, we need to do something about this. One, before somebody calls the police, because One, before somebody calls the police, because, uh, that was what the text message that came to me said they were going to do. Uh, but for the most part, they're, they're taking off, you know, they're, they're packing things up and they're, they're walking off. The kids are dejected and I could understand that. Um, you know, and the, the parents aren't exactly, you know, happy and joyous, but it's, it's a situation where I think we're all looking at it. I mean, it, I know, I know I don't want to do it and I know the police don't want to do it. I know the chief doesn't want to have her guys do it and we try to do it in the most, um, conscientious way that there is to do these things to let people know that, you know, look, you're, you're, you're doing this at your own risk. Um, that's what our signs say in the park. And, you know, these, the parks are decked. For all intents and purposes, the parks are closed. The walking trails and stuff, we haven't been taking people off of them, but we have been asked them to social distance.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Anyone else?
I have a question for the Borough Manager. Um, has the Borough, Upper Allen Township's contribution this year for the pool?
That is a good question. I do not believe, uh, Glenda, did you get that check yet? I don't remember seeing it come across my desk.
No, I was waiting to hear if you wanted me to invoice for that or not. I have to invoice for it.
Let me talk to Scott Fraser, um, and see where, how we want to handle this. If we want to add another year onto the contract or if we want to do a, um, if he wants to go ahead and put it through. And one of the things that go along with this, um, and I guess the motion is to close the pool for the season. So I'm going to speak to this. The, um, we have, we've got about a dozen to, uh, to 20 people that, uh, would like refunds for the pool, whether we open it or close it. Um, there's been a few other ones that, uh, maybe one or two that said, you know, apply it to next year. I would like to do that option if this, this motion is successful, uh, that they can, they can have the refund for the passes they've already purchased, or we can apply it to next year's pass. Uh, with the software we have, that'll be an easy, easy fix. I, I'll talk to Scott and see how, if we can come to an agreement on what to do with the $50,000 payment.
Okay. Given that, given that information you just gave, it would, I think an option would be to forego the 50,000 this year if they're willing to add another year onto the existing contract. And now for the legalese people, I don't know what that involves. But that, that would, that would seem to me to be the logical thing under the circumstances because we're all, we're all under financial pressure here with this.
Lisa's staring in her chair right now.
Yep. In regards to the passes, I, I know Hershey Park is not refunding their money, at least as of last week they were not. Um, I, I would also like to think that it would be appropriate for us to say, we will honor what those people who have paid, you're paid up for next year. Uh, I'm not really keen on giving refunds, but if the rest of council, uh, would like to go that direction, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to, uh, give in, but that's just my opinion of it right now. It's just another paperwork, paper mess that we'd have to deal with and exchanging money back and forth always causes us trouble at, uh.
I think it would be, I think it would be, uh, helpful to, to Roger and the staff if we have a motion from council as far as, uh, whether we are to refund or, uh, the, the monies, uh, upon request or, um, a motion to, um, allow the, the payment of the passes currently made for this season to be applied to next season regardless of the, the cost of a pass at that time. I think, uh, that would be the clearest guidance to, to, to Roger and staff, uh, for that.
So what you're saying, what you're saying is if there would be an increase next year, those who've already paid for their pass this year would not have to pay that increase?
That would be the, you know, a motion could be crafted that way if that's what.
So.
The consensus is.
All right. Now, now from a, a Robert's Rule standpoint, can we add that motion in? We don't want to add that into the pool motion, I don't think.
No, that would be a separate matter.
Can we add it to the agenda even though we've already done the addition?
It's, it's related to the topic. It's closely related to that. It would certainly be, uh, permissible, uh, here that clearly the public was on notice that the pool season was, uh, uh, being discussed this evening. So if council's inclined to make a motion, that would certainly be appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you. Understood. All right. So the motion on the floor is to close the pool for the, uh, 2020 season. It's been properly moved and seconded. Unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. Hearing none, the motion carries. The pool is closed. All right. Next item, next item. I think that we've already answered that one.
Yeah, I think we did. You want a motion on that anyway?
Uh, well, it's on the agenda, I guess. Yeah. Go ahead, Rodney.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we don't allow them to use the pool.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay. Any discussion? I think it's probably a moot point at this point. So unless I hear a negative response, we'll record, ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous and the, and the motion carries. Possible action. Oh, I'm sorry, Roger. I'm stepping on your toes. Go ahead.
No, you're not. No, you're not. Uh, discussion, possible action on the letter of support for amendment to Title 253, Chapter 81, Subchapter B on the Consolidated Statutes Amending Section 8131.
Do we have a motion?
We moved.
Moved by Mr. Anthony?
Second.
Second by, who was that?
Whitcomb, second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. And the motion carries. Next item.
Uh, discussion, possible action to approve expenditures from all funds for the period beginning April 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2020, and those are listed below. Uh, I will read them off since, uh, the audience does not, may not have an agenda in front of them. With a fire fund for $13,787.39 out of the general fund for $242,516.63, zero out of the highway fund, the pool fund has $2,894.96, and the capital fund has zero.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I think that was Mr. Pelman, wasn't it?
That is correct.
All right. Mr. Pelman made the motion. Second?
Second.
Mr. Whitcomb, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. And the vote, and the, uh, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Szczesinski.
Uh, discussion, possible action to advertise moving the June 2nd meeting, council meeting due to the conflict with Election Day.
All right. First need a motion and, okay, Mr. Pelman makes the motion and we'll figure out the date during the discussion. All right. Mr. Whitcomb, uh, seconds. All right. Then the discussion, we need to find a date here to add to the motion. Would June the 1st, the day before, work out? That's usually when we do it on a normal election day. We have it Monday night before. Would that suit everyone's schedule?
Works for me. Yes.
Worked for me.
And my schedule's clear.
Okay. So, uh, Mr. Pelman, if you would amend your motion to indicate the date would be June 1?
I'll amend that motion to include, uh, the new date as, uh, June 1st.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So it's been properly moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. Thank you. Meeting will be June the 1st. And you'll take care of the advertising of that, sir?
Yes. Lisa, yeah, Lisa and I'll work that up and we'll get it out.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item.
Last item, last item I have on the agenda is discussion of possible actions to settle, to set the conditional use date of July 7th at 7:00 PM for landmark homes at Legacy Park concerning new and innovative design in regards to signing.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Mr. Whitcomb, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Zaggerton. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, unless I hear a negative response, we'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. And the motion carries. All right. At this point in time, um, we reached that opportunity for citizens to make comments.
Gary? I'm sorry. President Weber?
Yes.
Can we add a motion regarding the refund of pool fees?
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
We allow for the staff to refund any paid fees for membership into the pool and/or allow for those fees to be retained for the coming full year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been seconded by Mr. Miller. Any other, any additional discussion? We've already kind of been through this. But anyone else like to throw anything else into the good of the order there? Uh, hearing none, unless I hear a negative response, I'll ask the secretary to record the vote as unanimous. And hearing none, the motion carries. Mr. Szczesinski, that you have your policy now set in place. So you and the staff can work on how you're going to let people know that. Okay? All right. Now, sorry, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Anthony, for remembering that. Appreciate it. Moving on to the, uh, citizens' comment section, this is the second opportunity. Are there any citizen comments?
I see no hands up.
I see no hands. Okay. Um, at that point then, is there any further business? I'll just call you out as I see you on my screen, Mr. Szczesinski.
Yes, I have one item that, um, Craig Yinger is the highway superintendent. Everyone knows he has been here, said he'll be celebrating his 46th year in June of employment at the borough.
That's a long time.
That is a long time. He is, he's been here since I think he was 17 years old. So, uh, one of the other things is we're going to be working on with the reopen plan, um, is getting back to live meetings. And I know that was something that, uh, Councilman Miller and, and, uh, President Weber and I have been discussing was recording those, these meetings, um, and continue to use our YouTube, uh, channel that we have established. So I'm going to be picking that back up and looking at what we have to do to the council chambers to take that from there. Um, so that, I could have something like that on the next agenda. But, um, in the meantime, I think, uh, once we go to this yellow, um, I think our next meeting will be by Zoom. Uh, but, and this is council's wishes too. I think our first actual live in-person meeting again will probably be for the authority, uh, coming up on the 15th of June. Um, so that, I've got to check with, um, in that case, uh, Chairman Miller on that one and, uh, see how we want to proceed with that. But, uh, we do have to have a PC meeting as far as the conditional use that was put in here tonight. And, uh, we'll get a recommendation from them, one way or the other, and then present that to council for the, the conditional use hearing on, on the 7th of July. Um, thank you for the direction on the pool and, and the other things. I know that's, that's been a sticking point for a lot of things. Um, I am extremely disappointed, but it gives us a direction. And I will have a, a plan. I was supposed to meet with someone today, uh, and that fell through at the last minute. But, uh, to get an idea of where we can go and what kind of costs we're looking at for the upgrades, the pool that we're looking to do.
Hey, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Wardle?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Uh, solicitors?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Miller, Michael Miller, that is.
Uh, nothing productive.
Thank you. Mr. Rogowski?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony?
Uh, just a, a notice to the rest of council, had a conversation with the committee, the finance committee and the president, and have asked for a finance committee meeting on May 27th at 6 o'clock for the purpose of talking to a potential financial planner for the borough.
Thank you very much. Uh, Vice President Miller?
Nothing further.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Zaggerton?
Um, just a reminder that the downtown partnership is meeting on a weekly basis with, um, our businesses. And we're happy to spread the word to other businesses and, um, to, to get them involved and see what we can do to support them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitcomb?
Are we going to do anything for, uh, Mr. Yinger's 46 years?
I'm sure we will. Correct, Mr. Szczesinski?
Yes, yes, we will. And that's, I mean, we're also waiting for him to see if he's going to give us his notice that he's retiring also. And then do something big across the board.
That would be good.
Okay.
And he will be recognized, fear not. Mr. Pelman?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Fire Chief Neff?
Hello. Hello, Mr. President.
Anything to add to the good of the order?
I do.
Oh, good.
I know that it's hard to get a lot of work done, uh, for council, but, uh, I just, I just forwarded my report. And the interesting thing that, that I started off the report was, I know back in 2010, they started talking about the new fire department. In 2014, uh, the fire tax came along. And the vision was the Form 1 fire company and Fund 1 company. And we've reached that milestone, uh, just recently this week where the distribution of funds are directly into the Mechanicsburg Volunteer Fire Department. So kudos to Borough and, uh, you definitely are streamlining our operation. And it's, it, it's, it's, it's good for overall, for not only council, but, uh, the taxpayers and for our fire organization. So thank you very much.
Thank you. A big thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Police Chief Myers?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did I miss anyone?
I did remember. I have a question.
Okay.
That's for Roger. How has the opening of the joint compost facility gone? Week?
Uh, pretty good. It's had its moments. Um, contractors are very upset. Um, we've been kind of letting the contractors in if they're, you know, trying to keep it non-confrontational. There has been some talk of, uh, they would like to see the hours lengthened. Um, and can't figure out why we're not doing anything on Sunday. Uh, but as far as that goes, it's, it's been steady, but, um, we've had a few days of, of pretty steady rain too, that they haven't overloaded us. So, uh, we're doing pretty good. I, we're going to start letting contractors back in, uh, beginning this week and go from there.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for asking that, Kyle. Appreciate it. All right. I have one, uh, or two things to add here at the end of the meeting. Um, as you are all aware, uh, Councilman Winchell has submitted his resignation from council. I'm instructing the Borough Manager to add to the first meeting we have in June, which will now be June 1st, uh, to that agenda, an action item for council's vote to approve, um, the resignation. At that point in time, that opens the ability for us to search for, uh, replacement. And at that point, I'm going to ask the Solicitor to advertise, uh, for candidates for, to open the field for candidates, uh, for consideration. Uh, and hopefully we would have those in, in time to hold interviews prior to the second meeting in June. If the stars all line up, um, we, we may be able to do that. If not, we may, we'll have still time left, uh, because we have, we'll. If not, we may, we'll have still time left because we have, we'll have 30 days from the time we vote. But I'd like to try to get it in in the second June meeting so that we can get another council person on board and move forward in July with a full board. So those are the two things that I have. Again, I want to thank everyone, everyone involved in this meeting tonight and, and our citizens for continuing to stay the course. It has be, it is becoming increasingly more difficult, I'm sure, for each and every one of you as it is for me. When you're, you know, in the same place all the time, pretty much all the time, it gets, it gets rough. And we're all learning to cope. And I, I certainly appreciate the efforts of Mr. Szczesinski and his staff and Chief Neff and Chief Myers and their staff for their dedication to the Borough and keeping things moving as best we can under these terrible circumstances. So I thank, thank Councilman, or Attorney Miller and Solicitor Coyne and Coyne also for their due diligence in helping us with the, the difficult decisions that we've had to make. And with that, if there's nothing else to add, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.